If you're in the public, just come to me and ask you to take a question now. I'll tell you later and just be teaching everybody, doing the decision process. This is the year, so you're holding your present. Commander, would you like to complete?
Please, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. Start my roll call. Jeff Upton.
Here.
Stephen Knight.
Here.
Marty Lindberry.
Here.
Misty Cottle.
Here.
Mont Rollins.
Here.
Dan Rodman.
Here.
City Attorney and City Clerk for both prisons.
John Collins.
Oh, John Collins, I'm sorry.
Hi, we also do.
Junicon.
And Junicon? I have said before.
And he's actually on there this time.
Alright. You know what, Russ? You're all last month. There we go. That's right. Alright, so the first item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do we have any changes that we need to the agenda? Do we have a motion?
I'll make it.
Second, we have a motion in second to approve the agenda as mail. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. Next is the approval of our meeting minutes around September fourteenth. Do we have any changes? We have a motion in second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. That motion carries. The next item on our agenda is the public forum. Do we have anyone that would like to address the city council tonight? We would ask that you limit your comments to about two minutes. Yes ma'am, step up and tell us who you are.
I want five minutes.
You got a minute and a half.
Seriously, I just want.
You're fine right there, Paula.
One, on behalf of the library, I'm glad to be here. To thank everybody that came for our grand opening. Our department did a fantastic job cooking and feeding everybody and there are a lot of people that helped, but we don't have any idea who you are, so we don't want to thank you anyway. We just have to take it, you know, we do appreciate it.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the council?
I'd like to commit a petition that the community has signed opposing the RV, proposed RV report on one of the two trucks in general.
Okay, thank you.
I'm, I'm what?
Okay.
I just want.
Tell us your name real quick, I didn't get Stephanie's name, we'll get it.
Stephanie Reynolds.
But I've had comments. The, uh, it's one, say one thing that I think we might have to do is that the walk and the other is, certain property is rare, where it's less than average, and we should be very careful where you want to park, and you're looking at the, of only years, there's women that's building, you see the land, uh, how that can be, if we, uh, there is.
Yes ma'am, thank you. And, and I want everyone to know, I'm glad some of you stepped around, so a lot of us becoming here and we've had meetings and we've discussed the serious business, and we don't have anybody to come in. Every now and then you're here, sir, with some good questions. But we would appreciate you guys coming, uh, I'm telling you right now, and I know a lot of people like here feeling like the, the planning commission was against them, and I, I hate that some people feel that way. We have been begging to get people to come in and help us to rewrite our ordinances. Those ordinances are in place so that the planning commission can make recommendations, the city council can approve those recommendations. So, we're trying to change some of those right now, and we'd love your input. Uh, we're, we're meeting, uh, two, three, four, uh, four nights a month, uh, on the planning commission, trying to get some of these things changed that we don't like. But I do want everyone to realize that, that our planning commission does have a set of guidelines that at one point the city, the citizens, uh, approved, and, and so they, they do have a duty to, to go by what we have as ordinances, right? And that is, that is their job, is to go to the ordinances. It is to listen to the city, don't get me wrong, but, but they do have a certain set of ordinances that they have to go by. And I think the berries are already left, but, but I do think we owe them a certain, uh, level of respect for, for looking at Westport to do its development. Whether it's one we like or not, they, they did come to Westport looking to dump money into our town and our community. So, I know that we have yeses and we have nos, but at the end of the day, I think everybody, they're wanting yes to make some money, but they're also wanting to put some money in our town. Residents are obviously wanting to be used for the property, uh, in certain orders. I, I give both sides, I just, I hope both sides can, can understand where the other side is coming from. So, that being said, does anyone else have any, any comments for the council? The, the, I would say the entire council was here for the last meeting, so that was good. They, they have, they are aware, they, uh, they've listened to your concerns, they, they have the, the document, uh, everyone can see it, uh, posted, with what conditions we have for conditional uses, so they're very aware of, of this situation, so. Yes ma'am, I'll get to you in a second.
Nancy Willis. Um, I'm a camper.
Uh huh.
RRB's in our backyard. I just wanted to understand their appeal is for the river. How you gonna get to the river? You know, what's your appeal to the river that you're gonna draw people in, right? There, Westport, this big beautiful river, right? That there's no access?
Yeah, and so, so do know that as a governing body, we're not considering a business model. It, it's, does it fit what you're wanting to put in?
I mean, I just, I, I don't oppose an RV park, but not like that.
Sure.
I think it's gonna cause hazardous, there's people dying at that river already. And, like I said, I'm a camper. When I go out in, I wanna be part of water. I wanna jump in the water. I wanna drink beer. You know what I'm saying? So, is that gonna happen in the city limits? We're not allowed to sell alcohol.
Well, I can assure you, there's a lot of beer being drank in.
Oh, I know. I, I know.
But do know, we, we have heard that, so we're not gonna discount.
Okay. And I just want to.
Yes, sir.
Well, we just want you, if I understand correctly, well, those folks make their decisions that comes to law.
That is correct.
Correct? So, what's the sense of the conversation, it's here now?
No, sir, we're not gonna do that tonight. We cannot do that tonight.
No, 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 no. I guess my question has to do with that, so, so if it's in front of you people, and you're going to make.
And we're not gonna talk about that at all tonight. So, no matter how you frame that question, we are not gonna discuss that until we have a recommendation.
Right. I wanna know if there's another, at that meeting, if, or if you're the same.
This is the deciding body.
This is the deciding body. And the folks, for example, who are tonight, will their input have any impact?
We can't talk about that.
Can't talk about the people, can't talk about the people having an effect on you?
Certainly, we can have a, absolutely. We, I just said, we're gonna listen to everybody in the city, that's what we want. That's what we want. But I, I do think that it's, one, correct me attorney, uh, I don't know that we can talk about a decision that, a hypothetical decision that, that we still need a recommendation for to follow the law.
I just don't know the process.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The process is, they make a recommendation, and then this body, this body makes a decision. This is. You know, what I actually liked, what happened earlier tonight, is people actually showed up. You know, that's the thing that people in this town need to do. They need to come in, give their input, where y'all have the direction to go, you know? Because what happens normally, y'all make a decision, people on the internet, you know, come and put their pitchforks and baseball bats and, you know, beach up where they shouldn't be, is here in the beginning, putting input to help y'all make the decision. Absolutely. Anybody else? Alright, we're gonna get into our agenda. Uh, we have three, uh, no, we have two items of new business, and once we get to those, uh, if anyone has questions about that, please feel free to ask. Well, and that is for the public for questions on, on new business. Uh, the way we run these meetings, because I see a lot of new faces here, so the way we run these meetings, our next, uh, next item on the agenda is all business reports. So, every department head in the city is going to report on how that department is running, we'll talk about budgets, uh, if somebody's over budget, we'll talk about that. Everything's on tape. So, let's start with the planning commission, they're a hot button item. Do you got anything to report?
A couple things. You shouldn't be a liar, I understand. You're welcome. Uh, with, last month, we had our next, our second or our third special meeting with Juliette Ritchie over re-updating our Title XIV zoning code to reflect the growth that will be happening in our area come here in the next decade or so. And, so we, we got a new flow charter, a new graph that shows the possible red different residential and commercial zones, that what would be by right uses and, uh, size of, uh, the, uh, size of the lots and buildable percentages and that, so we're gonna head with the, the specifics of what we're going to do, so. So, that's what happened with that, and our regular meeting, I don't think quite happened at our regular.
And lots, though.
We had more lots, that's correct. Yeah, for the same, yes, we ended up finalizing that lots for the city. And a couple others, too. People split property for family. And then on top of the world, we did our own new business.
Yeah.
Beyond that, uh, we will have our regular meeting, like I said, come Thursday, next Thursday, at six thirty here, and since we're tabled on the RV part, that we will obviously be getting into discussion on that. We would, I would love everybody this year who has an opinion to come there and help us decide through that, because that's, that's when it'll, that's when it'll be happening. So, I, I really hope people will come here next Thursday, six thirty here, for that meeting. And then we will then, well, we will also have our special meeting then again, on Wednesday the twentieth, at six thirty, which again, will be for the broader Title XIV, which gets into the zones and, uh, and all that, so hopefully, everybody could come for that as well and help us work through that, please. Public input is what we want. We're not here trying to just disregard everybody's voice. We want your opinion, and we want to apply that to our zoning code for the best. That, that is what I want, and I hope people will be ready and have some, some other input. Other than that, any questions to see council about our past reviews?
Any questions for Paula? Thank you, sir. Tracy's still here, yeah? Word report, Tracy.
Yeah, I just want to thank all of y'all, the new oil company, number four. My name's Tracy, we have film to report for, uh, to get a graphic ticket, or you want me to sit somebody open to you. I'm just probably round over there. As far as, um, everybody could see that our new oil company, so our strike on installation that was so we could get that done, and the, um, never standing input, we've been getting back to that since we, uh, two people back in office. That's been going in, a little bit of pressure, after we launched our month, uh, so, but we'll be working perfectly. As far as our disbursements and stuff, the disbursements this month were up about eleven thousand from what they were last month, but we are, we're right about same as last month, as same month that year, okay? And, uh, our tickets, this right month, we had three hundred and twenty-four that we dealt with as those were the ones we lost, so, um, we, we're, everything's pretty good, please, please.
Tracy? So, just so everybody knows, where is she talking about this again? The board is moving to a digital, uh, document storage, uh, something that we, we worked through at the city admin. Uh, I hope everyone has put our laser fish stack to, uh, to look at some of the documents in preparation for tonight's first meeting, but we will soon have that, maybe not searchable at the court, some of that could be private, but, uh, we are trying to get some of those records out of time governance and into. Next is our library report.
Um, I'm Blair, I'm a new student librarian. I didn't bring any book carrier in because I wasn't sure what I was supposed to bring, but I did bring some physical information. Um, and so, our in-person visits have been really up, probably because of our grand opening. Um, you know, I, last week was my first week, my first full week, um, at the library, and I've been really pleasantly, I mean, just amazed at the support that the library has for students all the time, and the amount of people that, you know, understand that the library is not just about books, the movies, it's also about information, um, client information, you know, medical information, legal resources, um, how to find a job, and so many people already asked me to help them write a resume. So, it's, I'm, I'm very, very, uh, very happy with the amount of support that the, that the library has given us. Um, so I'm gonna stick a one up, I don't know what kind of stats you guys would be interested in, if you're interested in, you know, checkouts, checkouts at stores are almost at forty thousand per drop. Um, requested items, five hundred and twenty-six. We've had thirteen new users. We've had a hundred and thirty-six new items, um, so books, DVDs, that kind of thing. Is there anything else I should add?
We'll talk about that. I love numbers, so, yeah, we'll talk about it.
I'll send them to you.
Okay. Any questions for Blair? Has everybody been down to check out the library, the mural? Say hello to Blair? Okay, good. Alright, and Blair and I will be doing Ask the Mayor on Friday, three o'clock, or three o'clock? Yep, are you still in town at three o'clock?
Yes.
Alright, so three o'clock Friday, Blair and I will be doing Ask the Mayor, get those questions submitted. Next is our police report. Chief Nelson.
My C faces in here that I went to school. I remember flood seemed like what, ten years ago, it's been over. That's what I'm saying.
We had magnet citations this month, uh, hundred twenty-five warnings. I think, let's see, our, uh, our warrant served with fifty-one was pretty good, and our rest were six for the month. Uh, I would, I think West Coast was good, went off well. It's always been this great part, we did a job doing this, top of government, we're very thankful for that. Can I help? You know, twenty twenty-two, you, you present. So, I would like to introduce our officer.
Oh, very good.
This is Chris Cornero.
Yes.
He came to us from Washington Regional, before that he walked at George, he becomes very highly recommended from Mike Ball, just spent a number of years working here, so I had a big conversation with him about him. He seems very motivated, took part himself to the, the football, football, football game by himself, it's lovely, it's not bad.
You should know that, right?
Yeah.
I don't.
But, uh, he seems motivated, he tells me, I think he's gonna be a good asset for, for us.
Fantastic. So, while you're here, uh, this is a perfect meeting to be at. My wife and daughter are sitting there, I'll get you to check out their meeting.
Any questions for me? I will have that MOU from the school next month.
Okay.
That's coming, they finally decided on, probably won't roll up, so we'll have it. Alright?
Alright. Thank you, sir. Any questions for Chief Nelson?
Uh, I haven't answered, are you okay with everyone's budget, some of the budget's a little rough, Chief Nelson was one of them, Mr. Capel, I believe, and some, uh, reporters and, uh.
I wanted to mention on that, I brought our maintenance, showed the very course, and coming in, and that's because, if y'all remember, I had to do a new, uh, transmission, more of the vehicles, so it's kind of awful course, that ran us about, about, I think it was close to four grand for a huge transmission. So, that's, that's kind of close, but I think we're about eight hundred and fifty up there. Eleven hundred, not eighteen hundred, so, that's gonna be close. It just takes one car. What do you guys know?
You can use the transmission. And so, so that everyone is aware of how, how busy our police department is, Chief Nelson didn't mention this, but our police department responded to three hundred and forty-three different calls this month, so, that's in one month, three hundred and forty we've called, that's not just outrighting tickets, that's, uh, that's domestic disturbances, that's staff, that's, uh, everything that they have to deal with. Those guys are busy, they are. Off you go, Sergeant Gordon.
Can I ask something about our public police department?
Is it P.O.?
It is P.O.
Police!
Three to four hours.
I'm eighty-two years old, when I leave the house in the morning, sometimes I don't quite have it together. I was coming by heart, reading eight lines of knowledge, and then going to the doctor. And his first question to me was, what do you think?
And I said, no, it's fine, no.
I said, are you on medication?
Yeah.
I said, do you know you owe the old one? And I thought, to me, that he was cheating. And I'm like, this young man is too interested in me, not interested in my ticket. Which that's what he said on the phone, I just wanted to say thank you for our, uh, I don't know if he's still here, but I never looked at him, I was the other one.
Alright, thank you for that. Isaac, can you get us our public works report?
Well, as y'all know, we've had a couple of rough days. We took six two on the guy, back to back, and then.
So, Isaac, what do you want to look? Can you, I know there was some, there was some concern, uh, that made it to Facebook, uh, why are we back in the same area, Victor, can you give us a, can you tell us how that some of that works, why we had to go back and fix it?
So, there is a nut, just south of Kelly, on the Trump corner there, there's a piece of pipe in there that, for whatever reason, is just in production. It did blow out while the sewer pre was working down there, trying to flush the, the sewer line, uh, we made repair on it, had the water back on, uh, it's not safe for riding, it was again, uh, just, just downstream from where it's at, and we got, we got a computer pipe, so. But yes, it, it's aging, aging pipe is, uh, is a problem, so.
And is that something that, uh, you like to, do you think you have it before now where it is stable, we'd be making a schedule repair?
It is stable. Our biggest concern is, we got one something blowed up down at North Street, the valve turned off, it's not here before it's off, it shuts after lunch, school gets to go, so we are going to try to schedule cutting in some valves down there, so, see if that happens in the future, we don't interrupt school, we don't have to go to preschool, send them water, so, we are planning on cutting it, at least two valves down, down, you know, that, so that we can better isolate that and not have the whole side of town off, which is what we, we have in our day. And the same for, don't blame that, I haven't had to make a paper, we have this whole tank up and shut off. Well, they were running off tanks, which we don't have adequate, so that's stories, but we're to run it very long, so. But yes, it was a, it was a long night and a rough Friday, so, so, going on water losses is not going to be.
We appreciate the effort.
One interesting thing that came out of it is when Wheeler blew out back there, I am able to look at our water usage through one of those seven meters that came along, and our sewer, that we sent back to another came along meter. The leak on Wheeler showed up at our water station, this pipe on the same day that blew up, so, so that one of them, I don't know if we got it in the sewer line, which we've already identified, so, it is neat that we, we did see that. Uh, I did need to make a few additions, I don't think we did get any more, if you think. But we talked, mainly about our water line that we didn't, uh, in the progress, but we have, I'll give you that, I do have trouble with crass here, to say they're good, except down there, and as soon as we read meters tomorrow, we're gonna start putting those in. That will, that'll be everybody on this side of the river, including Crest, Robinson, and Pleasant, they're all on this low pressure plane, they will all get a new digital meter that we can, we can read them daily, so, that will, that will allow these folks over here to, you know, and they're like, I think Don has his setup to where he can, he can look at his, uh, water usage daily, that goes through that meter, so. This is our older side of town, so we're hoping that really curbs our water loss through some aging meters.
That reminds me, Blair, if you would make enough, I want to talk about that on Ask the Mayor.
Okay.
Because inevitably, someone is gonna have more water usage once they get a new meter in, right?
Yes.
Uh, because we know that we're losing some water, it's not getting tracked through some of the old meters in the original, uh, part of Tamers.
It is a really neat feature for customers to be able to go on and look at theirs.
Right, but when their usage goes up, it's not gonna be too neat.
No. You know, Noel Baker looks at his daily, and he calls me, like, I think I got a leak.
Yeah.
You know, so, and then we go down there and try to help it. Uh, we've got that, uh, the sewer project at the school is two-thirds done, they hit rock again, uh, so they're hammering more. Uh, they've got this segment here on, uh, White Street that they're gonna do, and then one more behind the cafeteria, and then that should wrap up. So, they have, we call that a hundred percent on Westwood, they've got a couple of little items to address on Westwood, but it's nearly done. So, uh, our paving, our in-house paving of Jane Place is scheduled for this month, I don't know what day that's gonna fall on just yet, they're still trying to wrap up some highway stuff that they've got going in, go of business, so, they will be here at some point this month to, to do that. Uh, our, we will have a line segment here to replace in the alley when that time comes, because when we move the sewer line, we, we're gonna have to replace a piece of that five-month alley, so we're just gonna replace the whole thing, uh, when they get to that point, that we need to make that timing, we'll start on that, and that, that is one of our, our projects as well. So, other than that, I don't think I had anything else, unless y'all got some questions to fire up your air.
Any questions for Isaac?
Y'all probably did see us down here on Main Street taking some trees out of the Kennedy's yard, our sidewalk is moving forward, on around to the park, around to get across this driveway this year, and then try to plan for the, the last little piece going around to the park, so.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
You betcha.
Park Director Harrison? So, just before you get started, uh, it was brought up earlier, is there any trash at Riverside Park right now?
There wasn't at three thirty.
Because you picked it up?
That's exactly right. See you, my son. I just wanted to do you a couple of quick updates on our two big projects. Our field two reconstruction project, uh, has been completed, and it is fabulous, it's, it's gonna add years to my life. It's, it's gone from our, my biggest problem in this job, from hopefully my easiest thing to take care of now, I'm very excited about that. TJ and I also have been working on, uh, doing some other, um, improvements to the other fields as well, and that will, will be, make it much nicer for kids to play. and that will be, make it much nicer for kids to play on, but also my teacher for our job as well. So, that is completed, we're very excited about it. And then our other big project, the bike pedestrian trail that's going to go around Carter Park. We did sign a contract, we selected a contractor, Cooper Asphalt who did come in as the chiefess. We'd have to meet with him, but I feel very confident that it's going to be done correctly and, and a good job as well, so... Hoping that would start this week, but most likely it'll be next week. He feels like it won't take very long once he gets here, so I still think that something's going to be done by the end of the month. At least, yeah, I'll, I'll have some signings and some different things to add when it's done. But it should be usable hopefully by the end of this month, just in time for winter, but still, I'm, I'm excited about that. Other than that, our flight programs winding up, it's gone well, we got one more week next week. We just been working on a park, and we have another disc golf tournament coming up December eleventh. So, kind of an inter-classic at all, but excited about that, so I think that's all.
Any questions for Chad? A big thank you to you and T.J. for helping us with West Coast Golf. Chief Mayor?
I'm sorry, I don't even know that. Eighty-five calls for last month, which is about twenty more than we did this time last year, which is the busiest month we've had in the last two years. Which, believe it or not, is more than some of our departments in the county do all year, so it's been busy. Earlier that day, we have Junkertree, the thirtieth, I believe, it's five, five-thirty to seven. At the school, we're working with him again, police department as well. And we are doing a co-drive again, so we didn't do last year, so we're running it all the way again. But that's all we've got.
Alright. Christie, you want to close this thing out?
Entertain a motion to adjourn.
That's going to make it.
Um, okay, budgets look really good, our cash totals, our bank balances have increased by three hundred and thirty-nine thousand this month, and we are four hundred and fifty-two thousand under budget total for all of the departments. Um, we have one department that is showing that they're six dollars and forty-four cents over budget for the year. Uh, the rest of them are showing well, under budget. Um, our sales tax is still, the city sales tax is, has stayed around a seven percent increase for the year. Um, and then the total for the two has stayed steady around nine percent, almost ten percent for the year. Um, on the actual financials in the back, I have gone through and underlined, we're, we are seventy-five percent through the year, um, through the end of September. So, I basically went through and underlined anything that I could tell was going to be over budget at the end of the year. So, not necessarily everything that shows that over seventy-five percent is going to come out over budget at the end of the year. Hopefully that makes sense. It's looking like that is the main thing.
I don't know what you mean.
So, so we have some items that are paid heavy at the first of the year, so, um, they, they already show that they're eighty percent, but they're not going to change from that eighty percent right now, to where some items that show eighty percent are like John's vehicle maintenance, very possibly could still end up being over budget, because we may have more show up. So, I tried to just underline the things that may possibly, that look to me like there's a potential that they're going to be over budget at the end of the year. Um, I do want to point out, I didn't underline anything, but about eighty percent of all of our income lines are also over seventy-five percent, so the majority of our income lines have also...
I'm glad you brought that up. So, I was actually going to bring up, I was going to directly report to the Westwood General Fund, the first page on your budget packet. If you'll notice, you know, a lot of, we spend a lot of time talking about growth in the city of Westwood. Whether we're seeing growth, whether we're not, and obviously we have, well, anyway, if, if we look at our, at our budget, our billing and plumbing permits, we've budgeted four thousand dollars for the entire year. We're three-quarters of the way through the year, and that's at sixty-five hundred dollars. Uh, our planning commission fees, we budgeted a thousand, we're, we've already hit sixteen hundred. And we can go through it, and there's, there's several other items that are, go the same way. And what I'm getting at, our sewer tax, what we, what we predicted to have for the year, sewer tax revenue way over budget, so we are seeing some growth, a lot of it, we're not necessarily seeing the buildings come up right now. In some cases, we are, we're seeing several houses around town, new houses that are being built. But, but some of that stuff is in planning, the, the planning commission has a twenty-eight home subdivision we'll need from them at their next meeting, but great to hear. So, I just wanted to point out, there are some, some definite growth items that we're seeing in the budget other than just sales packs.
And I did highlight on the water department, I'm trying to make sure we look at that every month. The sewer sales was, we were actually twenty-five thousand dollars to the good this month over what we had to pay, pay a bill for treatment. We can take Lord's Rain Drop on that, that's what, why, why that was. Obviously, that twenty-five thousand would pay our bond payment this month, and I think we've had two months out of nine that we could have paid our bond payment. On that note, we have asked A.N.R.C. to forgive our remaining bond, three point five million dollars. We have not gotten a answer from them yet, but they have told us that by November seventeenth, we will have an answer, so... Everybody keep your fingers crossed, hopefully we'll have good news on that.
So, let's expand the line just a little bit, Chris.
I was going to say, just for ones that probably haven't heard, what is that bond payment every month?
It, fourteen thousand eight hundred, I think, right at that, every month is, will be the bond payment that actually we have to pay that for the first time this month. So, we have turned in a request for them to do a loan of forgiveness, so basically that just means that they would not make us pay that money back, that we would be forgiven that, that one.
That's huge news for the city.
It is.
So, just to give everyone a little bit of information on this, currently, this month, we paid the city of Fayetteville thirty thousand two hundred and twelve dollars for treatment of the sewer. On top of that, the bond payment would be fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars. So, that's what we're looking at in monthly fees for our sewer, that's, that's why the sewer prices went up so much. We have, because of all of this ARPA money, Christie wrote a letter to the state and said, "Hey, we want all of our bond forgiven." If we can get that, that's going to be huge. We're currently budgeting, the budget workshop is coming up. We currently have three hundred thousand dollars worth of sales tax allocated to the water and sewer department to make up short holes because of these, this bond payment. You know, we're not going to be able to cover the bill without adding three hundred thousand dollars of sales tax. So, the sewer rates that we're paying now, they're extremely high, and nobody's happy with it. My wife complains every month when ours comes in, as many people in the audience complain, but as it is, we're still not taking in enough money to even cover the bills. So, if we can get this forgiven, I'm not saying your rates are going to go down if we get it forgiven, but at least the city will be able to cover that bill. Yeah. Any other questions concerning that?
Is there a chance that they would say, "We'll forgive half of it," or is it all or nothing?
We don't, I...
You don't know?
I think there's a chance of anything at this point, we're hoping for any help. Best case scenario would be all of it, and that's what we've requested, but at this point, we're just hoping for any help.
We'll take what we can get.
Yeah.
Mayor, I need to complain to, and I definitely just don't want, I just drop my water bill off Friday every night.
So, you're saying I need to appoint Leslie to the city council?
Uh, the only other things I have, other than that, we did receive seven hundred and nineteen dollars of additional ARPA funds. And I just drew like American Rescue Act, so, just for people that don't know what ARPA is at this point, we've talked it to death, but... I believe we didn't get a specific reason for that money, but when they were asking the states if they wanted to participate, wanted the money, they, or the cities, I'm sorry, the cities did have an option to not participate. And that money basically stayed in the coffers, when they got the money for the cities that did want to participate, distributed, they split up the rest of that money and distributed it out, so... Although we haven't gotten something that said specifically that's what it's for, that's what my assumption is that that seven hundred dollars is for, that's been added to that account, so it'll be in whatever projects.
Christie did separate that out into a separate thing that we approved, added last month.
Yes. And then the only other thing I have, I just wanted to say a quick update, we did a, the fall cleanup this weekend. We really didn't have a very good turnout for that, we had ninety-six loads all for Friday and Saturday combined. We typically have about a hundred and twenty on Friday itself, so I don't know if that means everybody's got all their junk party cleaned up, or if they're just waiting for fall, or for spring, I'm not sure, but...
Or they had to work Friday and Saturday.
You would, or they had to work, yeah, that's possible, so, but we did have that this weekend, so obviously we'll have another one.
Any questions for Christie? No? Thank you, Christie. Alright, so, old business, an update on the land sale slash purchase. We talked about the purchasing lot next to the library. Christie brought up something in my attention that I thought was very important. I took it for granted that Friends of Library owned that building on the other, on the corner lot next to this lot we're looking at purchasing, and that there was a, there was something in place that the city would have first right of purchase or first right of refusal, should they decide to do something with that. Uh, there is nothing in place. Friends of Library, I have spoke with them about that, they are looking, they're talking with their attorney about some other things. They are going to get us something in writing that will allow the city first right of refusal, should they decide to, to sell that building. And they're not looking to sell us, don't get me wrong, I just don't, it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't do us as much good if we didn't have the entire frontage of that, that block, right? So, I wanted to put that out there. So, we talked about the purchase price of that lot being forty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. We did split the lot in the city, I've talked to the person interested in purchasing that. We, we talked last month, we looked at a, a price comparison, what land's selling for in the city. We saw that commercial property was selling on a high end for sixty thousand an acre. That surveyed out to be point six eight acres, six, six nine, so roughly half an acre is what that surveyed out to be. The person interested in purchasing that said that they would give us thirty-five thousand dollars for the lot, which is market value. They also said they would make a donation of fifteen thousand through the library, or city, or however it needs to be done, so that we would have fifty thousand dollars to purchase that lot. So, what does the council have to say about that? Are we okay with that, do you want to move forward, do we... Tell me.
Yes, maybe.
Y'all make a motion that we accept that?
I second.
I don't have the contract in front of me. We have a motion that we, and a second, that we accept those two offers.
Yes, sir.
Is there any discussion before we take a vote on that? Okay, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
The opposed, no? That motion carries. I will move to, to get contracts in place, so that we can move forward on purchasing this.
I'm sure they will be happy.
I know the, I know the lot beside the library would be very happy, he's been waiting.
Yeah, it's been a couple of months.
So... Yes, sir.
Could you somehow or another put a little something together to say thank you to Shannon for that?
Yeah, certainly, certainly we can, and...
She made it happen, huh?
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, and, and I think everyone is very much, yes. As a matter of fact, you weren't here the night the council told me to, if I wanted to purchase a lot, I should let Shannon do the, the selling of that to the councilman, and for me to be quiet. So, yes, Shannon was instrumental in, in that purchase, absolutely. So, Shannon got it purchased, and Blair is going to, to make it work.
Purchase, is there a contingency on getting access to the library first refusal? Are they together or separate?
There's no contingency currently on it, no.
But is that what you're shooting for?
I'm not shooting for a contingency, I'm shooting for a document that says we have the first right of refusal.
That's what I'm...
Yeah, yeah.
I don't know the language.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm not, as of right now, I'm not holding anything up until I get that. I'm taking the president of the Friends of the Library's word that we will get that. Is the council okay with that?
Yes.
That's you elect the, is the president. Alright, moving into new business. Item one is to approve the property tax mileage of five meals for the general fund, to use this every year in October. I'll make that motion. We have a motion in second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
The opposed, no? Okay? Item two, his ordinance, five zero three, amending changes to our municipal code, Title Nine, eleven sixteen fifteen. All of this concerns the planning conditions. If you have questions, Walter can, can answer, if you guys have in your packet.
Mostly. Mostly, yeah.
More about fourteen, we deferred.
So, you have ninety percent of what we are changing here has to do with street specifications, water piping specifications, sewer piping specifications, and drainage, drainage piping specifications. We are also adding some, we're adding some protection to the city to, to help us when we request that, when we say a subdivision is going, going to go in, but it's going to negatively impact the, the streets that, that are adjacent to it, it's going to increase the load of traffic. Part of this ordinance is going to help us force the developer to pay for widening those streets. It's going to give us a little bit of language in there that, from a legal standpoint, allows us to have certain requirements in there, even if they are off-site. Part of this, uh, planning package is changing our minimum lot size in the city. We're currently at an eight thousand square foot lot with an eighty-foot frontage. What is, one of the proposed changes is changing that to a seventy-foot frontage, and a seven thousand square foot minimum size lot. In a subdivision height situation, a developer could come in, and we have this in place, so we're saying, is it twenty percent or ten percent?
Twenty.
Twenty percent. So, if twenty percent of the lots are smaller than that seven thousand square foot minimum, if only twenty percent of the lots are smaller, they can go ahead and build those on smaller lots. They can, they can develop a smaller lot.
But no smaller than six thousand.
A six thousand square foot minimum on this. Does that, does that make sense?
So, it's going to be like, it's just going to pay in with anybody lots, it's the reason.
So, if someone came in with twenty lots, they would be, they would have to have fifteen of them at seven thousand square feet, but we would allow five of them to remain below that, but more than six thousand at least.
And yes, John, Jim, that this does get us, I, I won't say it's closer to all cities, but it's definitely closer to, to some cities. Yeah, a lot of cities.
Right. Juliette Ritchie told us that that's an easier way of fixing in the, the irregularities that come with laying out streets and sewer and all that, that instead of them having to come to ask us for a variance on, you know, fifty square feet or something like that, we just say, "Okay, yeah, there's a certain percentage," and then they can work it in that way.
And the planning commission is here, so if I have missed anything that we are proposing changes to, and attorney, if you're, you're aware of this as well, be sure and bring it up.
We can start getting a little bit more help from the staff with some professional review, and then if we find that developers don't kind of do their job, and, and across their keys, and they submit their first pipeline requires additional review, we'll get reversed for the professional fees. the professional fees. So you'll have a planner and you'll have Nick, you know, helping us with those. That really helps the planning commission out because they'll have professionals telling them, you know, this plan doesn't quite comply. That's pretty important as well.
Yes.
I did have one question about Title IX, when it talks about the streets and sidewalk standards. There was something brought up at the last council meeting that there was certain money that was available to help us mitigate something. And so my question would be if that, if those new streets would be up to that standard so that the state would allow, take us to get help.
Yes, and did we get that addressed? I think we, the minimum with?
Yes.
Guys, it's, I don't know what time it is, but I have to sleep a little bit.
I don't blame you.
So yes, Jimmy, in, in response to your question, that's, the, the state gives us, they call it turnback money, state turnback money, and we can apply that to any street that meets their minimum specifications. I think Tom brought that up last month and yes, we did get that language in there so that even our subdivision streets would meet requirements to qualify. So a lot of our street specs are gonna refer back to our dock specs for highway construction. So...
Perfect.
So yes. Any other questions on that?
Can I just say, we put the summary in here. I do have 181 pages, if anybody wants to read them. I just didn't think it was necessary to print it all. Thank you, if anybody...
And I'm ready.
Yeah, yes, Mayor, I talked to Christie about the emergency clause and we don't, we don't just stick them on every ordinance slightly, but what I've been told is we need to go ahead and get this in place for our next submitting, so...
Yes.
So Mayor, after you get a motion to suspend the rule and a vote on that, a one's vote, and then a motion, if there is one to pass, and a vote on that, if it passes, we'll have a third vote on the emergency clause.
Okay. I'll make a motion to suspend the rule.
I'll second.
So we have a motion, second, to suspend the rule. We'll do a roll call on that. Missy Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Frohmorn?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Gina McHatt?
Yes.
Colin Rollins?
Yes.
Jim Condon?
Yes.
Okay, that has passed.
I'll read the title real quick, Mayor. It's an ordinance to amend the Westport Club ordinances and adopt and updating amended provisions, requirements, regulations, and development of land, including not limited to those affecting streets, sidewalks, drains, and erosion control, zoning, and subdivision regulations in further purposes.
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion, pass.
I second.
We have a motion in second. We'll do a roll call, though. Missy Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Frohmorn?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Gina McHatt?
Yes.
That has passed.
So it's passed, and Mayor, in, in our city, an ordinance would go into effect in 30 days unless the city council voted to have an emergency clause on the ordinance. This one has one, if they choose to vote on it, so you're going to motion.
I'll second.
We have a motion in second, to pass this with emergency clause. Missy Cottle?
Yes.
Jeff Upton?
Yes.
Jan Frohmorn?
Yes.
Marty Lindebury?
Yes.
John Collins?
Yes.
Gina McHatt?
Yes.
And Jim Condon?
Yes.
That motion carries.
So when this big behemoth gets posted in our five places, the moment it's posted will be effective.
Thanks for all y'all's hard work on that.
Yeah, so I think I mentioned earlier, the planning commission is meeting three or four times a month right now. I'm trying to get some of this stuff passed and changed in better shape. All right, so other business, we have scheduled budget workshops for the council. Still good with that date? November 16th at 6:30 PM? How many people can make that one?
I can. I can make it.
So John, would it be okay with you if you were a copy of that budget?
I wouldn't like to hear it. I would be in close to mine.
Well, he might as well care.
We'll try to get you some of that copy of it as soon as we can. All right, so we have that set for the 16th at 6:30. Mayor's comments, we did put in place code enforcement. Code enforcement, and I told you wrong earlier, code enforcement will start this weekend. She was gonna start this past weekend, and the idea is, it's Stephanie Gill, I think Toby over there last month, but she's gonna try to do code enforcement on Saturday so that she can actually talk to the citizens that, that she's moved with and is talking to about, you know, whatever, whatever piece that they're out of compliance on. So we do have signs, a vehicle, we have uniforms so that she is identified as code enforcement, and that will begin this, this Saturday. Again, the idea is we're not, we're not looking to try and code enforcement tickets, we're looking at cleaning up some places in the city. So she's gonna be actively working with citizens, trying to, to get problems alleviated that are, that are out of compliance. So if you're hearing, if you're getting called or anything, just know that that, that should be starting up on Saturday. What are the last?
We're telling them to do what they're told and cleaning up.
Yeah, that's right.
First couple of months of...
Yeah. Yeah, and we're expecting that. We're expecting that.
So if there are any citizens that have concerns about violations of codes, what do they do about?
Call you.
Call me. What's the process for our citizens, that they have concerns about code enforcement?
So yeah, they just, they need to come to us. So the code enforcement officer has access to our, our codes. A lot of that is, is in our planning code, a lot of, a lot of the issues that she's gonna be facing. And she is, she has a worksheet that she's gonna, to work with them on as far as, you know, labeling, this is, this is where you're out of compliance, this is, you know, you got 30 days to get it cleaned up, please work with us. She's gonna check back in with them, see if they're making progress. If, if we're, if someone is out of compliance and just refuses to, to work with the city and getting it cleaned up, at that point, we'll, you know, criminal issue and we'll, we'll send out a certified letter and basically we'll fine them, you know.
Is there currently an appeals process, or is that only gonna be in the new one?
I do not believe there's an appeals process for code enforcement.
Currently, right now, there's none.
Because it's still a handle in, in the criminal court. And so that's built in appeals.
I kinda skipped over other business and we put that there in case someone, the council had anything you need to bring up in the meeting, anything the council needs to bring up.
I would just like to say one thing to Walter. I do appreciate, and I know that you're in a, in a hard position, because, you know, I understand that there's times when it seems like you are arguing with the citizens or arguing with us, but I realize what you have to do is a really hard thing. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second, third?
Motion second, third, to adjourn. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? We're done.